I'd like to call this regular town council meeting and council chambers to order. Could I please have a roll call?
Present.
Here.
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 Could I please have everybody uncover and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
No approvals for the minutes. We do have a few special presentations. Councilor Mador, would you please read resolve number four dash twenty twenty-three?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolve number four dash twenty twenty-three proclamation and recognition of EMS week, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three through May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital service and whereas the members of our emergency medical service team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital, including out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and education. All right, thank you very much. I got two now. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of the first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of our emergency medical service team, whether full or part-time, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their real life-saving skills. And whereas is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, and now therefore the town of Millinocket in council assembled, Millinocket Town Council and council assembled on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, hereby proclaim and recognize the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Second. Motion made by Council Mador, second by Council Pelletier. Any council discussion on the order? Council Mador.
I will go. First and foremost, as someone who for a lot of years had a an elderly parent who suffered from a lot of different ailments, I can tell you that our emergency medical technicians in this town of Millinocket, not only do they know their profession very well, they are compassionate, they are caring, they know their patients, they go beyond the efforts that you would normally expect. And we are very fortunate to have the crew that we have had in the past, in the present, and hopefully will continue in the future. If you've ever been in a situation where you've needed to call for assistance, it is heartwarming and reassuring to know that the person that comes to your door is going to be someone that you know, someone that is willing to go ahead and make a connection with you and your family, and that connection just does not stop the minute the ambulance doors close. That connection goes way beyond and into the everyday life of you and the community. They come in. I've had a lot of times where they've come and checked up on my on my father beforehand. They go above and beyond. And to make it short, we would be hard-pressed as a community, especially an aging community like ours, to not have the service that they provide. It is exhausting work, but it is important, it is respected, and it is appreciated by the town of Millinocket, and I will say thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Council Mador. Any other council comment? Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything new to add. The proclamation said it all, and then followed up by Council Mador said it all. But I am just eternally grateful for our EMS providers in the community. I would not want to live in a community that did not have that service, and like you had mentioned, as an aging community, well, regardless of your age, we need these services, and I take it for granted oftentimes. And I just want you to know that you are so appreciated, and I'm so glad that you're in the back row there today, and just just know your community is so thankful for you.
Council Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reach out and say thank you. We appreciate what you do for the community. As a father, I get to say EMS responded to my son at one point, and I appreciate them doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Higgins. Any other council comment? With that, I'd just like to say thank you as well. It's kind of symbolic that you're sitting in the back because you are the backbone of your community. You're there when everybody needs you, and it is much appreciated. You're a tremendous asset. And I don't think that anybody could do without the service that you provide. So once again, thank you from all of us on the council, in the town of Millinocket. I'm sure all of its citizens that you guys provide your service to. With that, I'll go down to the public. The public like to respond to the resolve?
Millinocket offers many services. EMS was one service I hoping I would never want. I did. And were they were very they were very caring, they were very knowledgeable. They are assets.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any other public comment?
At your time. Father.
Thank you, Mr. Love it. Any other public comment? Via Zoom? Mr. Manager.
I shared a few thoughts this afternoon. We had had a Assistant Chef, I mean Assistant Chief John Cody put on a great lunch today at the firehouse. And I was grateful to be invited to to join the crew and Chief Malcolm and and all who were there. There were some part-timers. There were some call folks there. It was quite a quite a mix. We had a great chat. Gave away a few cool door prizes to the to the group. And, you know, really just we're so grateful for having a crew and hopefully continuing to expand that crew. So we have more people on at all times so we can offer even greater and more consistent coverage and service. So from a from an administrative point of view, we appreciate our fire and EMS crew, and from where I sit as the administrator asking for funds as we continue to support and try to build that department, I appreciate council's support of that as well, as we look at adding more crew members and more funding and getting better gear and upgrading the quality of gear that we have there, a lot of outdated stuff we're trying to replace. So there's incredible support around that department and tons of appreciation. Thank you.
All right, back to the council. All those in favor of this resolve? I see six zero. Council Mador, would you please present? Believe that make sure you read that first. There you go. I didn't put the order. Council Higgins, would you please read resolve number five dash twenty twenty-three?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Resolve five twenty twenty-three, a proclamation honoring Jack Morris for his award of the Millinocket Events Committee Scholarship. Whereas Jack Morris was selected for the scholarship based on his exemplary community service, and whereas Jack Morris has gone above and beyond in the community, community volunteerism, he has volunteered for Millinocket Little League, Little Giants Football, and youth flag football. Jack has volunteered alongside his pastor doing various community work, as well as an active volunteer at his church, and helped older adults move out of their homes into nursing or assisted living facilities. Whereas Jack's Jack Morris dedicated his high school career to being a role model for the youth in Millinocket. Now therefore, it resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three does hereby recognize honor and congratulate Jack Morris for his dedication to the town of Millinocket and scholarship award of five hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Mador. Council discussion on the order? Council Mador.
Again, I'll go first. You you talk about a community and especially a town like Millinocket, some of the things that come up at the mountain, the lakes, the recreational assets we have, the greatest asset this community has is our children. And Jack is an exemplary person who have that. He is and has been and will continue to be, I know as an adult, but he has been all through his school years, probably one of the finest young men I have ever had the opportunity to meet. He has grace and character, wit, sensitivity, as well as an academic and athletics prowess that is second to none that have gone to school here. My understanding is that he will go to school and he'll pitch at his next school, which if you know Jack and his family, baseball, I truly believe more so than anything else is probably one of his top two loves. He is probably one of the finest young men, like I say, I have ever had the opportunity to be around. I know you are going to do extremely well in your future life. I hope that life sometime finds you, come back to Millinocket, be part of the community again, because you are the type of young man that Millinocket so desperately wants to have and retain and come back to our community to lead. I hope to see someone like you in a position like this someday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Mador. Any other council comment? Seeing none, I will say a few words. Jack, I'm on this committee that presents these these scholarships, the events committee, so as Tommy Malcolm back there is. And when I seen this application come across our desk, it was it was very enlightening because you struck me even as you was in middle school. I remember my son Luke going down to your house a few times, and you always carried yourself very high, and you you must make your parents very, very proud. Your dad and your mom must be very, very proud of you. Other than the athletics, other than the scholastics, you always seem like a really good guy. And that's what we need more of. You're you always seemed to me like an example for the other kids around, and you're gonna you're gonna take that with you because I see integrity in you. I've always seen that. So when this came across last week, I wanted it to be more than just a scholarship for you, and I know five hundred bucks. Hopefully it helps you out. I know it's not gonna be everything that you need, but I felt that you needed a little bit more recognition from the town, and the same thing with Ms. Campbell. I felt that you guys needed to know that your town, other than your family and your church, were all very proud of you, but your town is very proud of you as well. So with that, I'd like for you to accept this award, this resolve. Before that, I'm gonna go down to the public. Would you like to say anything, or would your family like to say anything, or anybody that's here on your behalf? Would you please step to the mic, ma'am? Name and address, please, for the record. Thank you, Ms. Morris. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor of this resolve? It is six zero. Guys all set?
Yeah. I think.
Council Bragg, would you please read resolve number six, twenty twenty-three?
Resolve number six dash twenty twenty-three, a proclamation honoring Cindy Campell for her award of the Millinocket Events Committee Scholarship. Whereas Cindy Campell was a lot was selected for the scholarship based on her exempl- exemplary community service, whereas Cindy Campell has earned over seventy hours of community service in Millinocket, dedicating her time to youth sports program. Cindy went above and beyond for both Little League Baseball and Little Giants Football, as this was her favorite type of volunteer work. Whereas Cindy Campell dedicated her high school career to being a role model for the youth in Millinocket. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three does hereby recognize honor and congratulate Cindy Campell for her dedication to the town of Millinocket and scholarship award of five hundred dollars.
Motion made by Council Bragg, and seconded by Council Higgins.
Chairman.
Council Mador.
Uh, yeah, I would ask that this, before we go to vote or anything else, that this be tabled until our next council meeting, when Sidney could be present receive her award and her recognition.
I agree, Council Mador. All those in favor? Six zero orders table to next council session. Appreciate it. All right, unfinished business. Order number one forty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number one forty dash twenty twenty-three, providing for establishment of a vendor application for events held by the town of Millinocket. Whereas the Millinocket Events Committee recommends the Millinocket Town Council adopt this formal application for vending at town-sponsored events. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached vendor application developed by the town of Millinocket Events Committee.
Check it.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order? Council Higgins?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've just got a couple of questions on to looking on the back of the order, just going over the minutes as far as when it was ran through the events committee. It was I see that it was voted on twice. I just want to clarify that it was three zero three, is that three yeses, zero nays, and three abstains?
I am going to refer to, I wasn't present for some of those, so I'm going to refer to Chief Malcolm, the committee co-chair or vice chair.
So when I put in order to replace these, I'll focus.
Paul Malcolm, seventy-three School Street, co-chair, events committee. Yes, correct, three, four, and thank you. I I think it meant, yeah, yeah, I think they weren't there. I think that's why there were abstentions, because they were not there.
So they're abs and tees, they're not actually abstentions then.
That's the way she put it down.
So there were six voting members, three of them not were there.
Thank you, Frank. Have the meeting, they have I can't really hear any of it.
Did they have a quorum to hold the meeting with only half the members there and not a majority? Once again, Tom?
Oh, we don't use Robert's Rules of Order, and we do not have that in the in any bylaws for committees. So I don't know if if half is considered a or not, Council Pelletier.
Well, Robert's Rules of Order is what we follow for all meetings. And even a majority, I would suggest we withdraw the motions and able
send it back to the committee level for a consensus vote for a majority?
Need a majority to have a quorum for a
Are you asking for this to be tabled until such such time arises? All those in favor of tabled in this order?
I second Louis' motion.
Thank you.
This, we have have the previous motion on and a second withdrawn.
Yeah, you have to you have to rescind the the second and the actual motion. So whoever did the second.
Do we have Councilor Mador? You've got the second.
I rescind, I second.
Send it, Council Danforth, do you rescind yours? The second has been rescinded, the motion has been rescinded. I have a motion on the floor for a table, and the second, all those in favor of tabling this till after the next events committee? And it's see six zero. Motion is favored. Orders tabled. Mr. Manager, there is no timeframe on that table, and it's after the next events committee.
Well, there is.
I think I think that I think that that decision is going to greatly impact our Fourth of July celebration.
Order number one forty-two dash twenty twenty-three? Oh, wait, no, you gotta go to the manager's.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recently met with the president of Outreach Broadband, Mr. Tom Kirby, and two of the local team members on providing additional free Wi-Fi access in public spaces within the town of Millinocket. Outreach has agreed to provide free Wi-Fi networks at Veterans Memorial Park, Dutton Pride Park, and Rec Complex, as well as the Millinocket Little League Field. We will be having some discussions coming right up, whether or not, or regarding possible limitations either on timeframe, whether to, you know, cap it at a certain time of night, we open it in the morning, or speed-related alterations that that can be made to limit maybe, you know, people gathering to stream or download movies or different things like that, that would kind of above and beyond the intended nature of public Wi-Fi spots. I'll be reaching out to some counselors to possibly join that conversation. Maybe in one of the next one or two council meetings, we could certainly invite Mr. Kirby to speak with us here at a council meeting to clear information on the on the plan there, if there's interest interested in some feedback this evening. We had discussed several other locations throughout the town. All were deemed no-go's due to lack of utilities available to make connections to power shelter for the systems. We it this this won't affect the downtown network that already exists that's provided by Axiom. So that will still continue as a separate system throughout our downtown corridor here. That system does not reach Veterans Memorial Park. So the additional hotspot for that location will. Certainly be a big benefit to our, um, community events, Farmer's Market, Trails End Festival, Fourth of July, that sort of thing. So we're, we're very happy for their willingness to work with us on that. Stemmed from the work that we're doing, planning the installation of additional security cameras. Throughout, uh, parks and the brush pile and. Several other locations that we've been discussing. That is. That's coming along very nicely. I expect to bring a plan for funding. Uh, of, of those additional cameras in the very near future. But we can all look forward to that. So I do thank, um, Outreach Broadband for their. But they have a, they've, they've built a great presence in the community, and they're certainly. Offering above and beyond services to. Better situate us and. Community members. Uh, with some new guidance from the Community Development Block Grant. Um, office at the state level, we've. Found a need to pivot and adapt our plan for spending of that, those funds. The, we recently learned that those funds actually need to be spent. By June nineteenth, rather than just allocated, which is how we were directed previously. We. Were looking into several other projects, including. Uh, solar and, and actually the security cameras were part of that. Well, but with the inability to. Spend the money on those invoices before this timeframe, we had to. Uh, change plans and come up with some other. Possible goals for funding for those other projects. Uh, but I'm happy to say that we were able to finally. Purchase the, um, digital sign for the front of our building that has been. Um, a goal of this council for several years, certainly before my time. Um, the opportunity was there and we were able to seize it. Um, so. We are. Planning to have that installed as soon as possible. I think we're looking at. Something like a six to eight week window on, on shipping, and we've been talking about, um, finalizing a bid for installation. Can put out soon and hopefully, uh, get into that same pot of funding, so won't have to pay out of pocket. Installation. Um, these signs are great. Uh, they're going to, this sign is going to eliminate a lot of. Uh, you know, unnecessary paper clutter from the, you know, front of our building and make everything nice and. Nice and neat, we'll be able to advertise plenty of different messages about community events and council meetings and. So many things for even other organizations as well. Uh, we did, we did have that included in a grant application that we recently submitted, uh, based off of. Um, emergency management and, and mass communication within a community. Uh, that application was submitted for a single-sided sign and a double-sided sign. So it is still likely that we will get that additional funding and be able to install a double-sided sign. Uh, in a more high-traffic area, uh, that could be seen driving either way on Central Street. Um, to help share, we're constantly trying to. Reach out to more community members and get our messaging out and engage more people and encourage more people to be involved. So. I, I see this as an opportunity. To engage with more community members that. Somehow miss our newspaper articles and our Facebook posts and our website and our, you know, upcoming radio ads and, and whatever else we put out there newsletter. Um, I think it'll, it'll be great. And it's also the intended purpose of that grant is for. Um, mass communication in emergency services, so we'll be able to use it. Warning for inclement weather and road conditions and. So many other things. Very excited. Um. It's been quite a while since we've been able to have the time to include. Department updates. Um, I do, and I'm going to. Skim through several here. Uh, I do encourage. All to go online to view this report and get up to date with everything that's going on. There's a lot more information that I'm going to go through here. Uh, but the Public Works Crew has, um, completed all this street sweeping, uh, for the initial round. They're going through. Um, hitting spots a second time and working to keep the, um. Storm drains cleaned out for, for all the rain that we have. Uh, and they are working rapidly to get the, uh, town-owned process of land throughout the community, uh, mowed and in tip-top shape for the upcoming holiday weekend. Uh, we have a. Group of. Um. At the summer project and, and motorcycle riders and first responders and, and folks coming through in a big parade this weekend. Uh, we hope all will be able to get out and, and celebrate their presence as they ride into town. I know. A couple of our counselors are going to be involved in that. It's a, it's a great group, great organization with great mission. Um, very impactful when they come through. Uh, a word to the wise, the, um, Public Works Crew will be out painting. Crosswalks and, and arrows and things like that throughout the streets, uh, in this next week, so please. Just be aware that they will be in the road doing that. Uh, they will divert traffic, I'm sure. Um, but. It's a much-needed project. Uh, over at the transfer station, we want to remind folks that the. The brush and compost area is left open at all. Uh, times when the transfer site is closed as a convenience to the public, and we hope that folks will stop abusing that privilege. Uh, we recently had to pull out a complete pellet stove. Uh, and of an entire pickup load of concrete and bricks from the brush pile. Uh, that, that behavior is just absurd. And we can't have that over there. I hope that once we have the. Uh, additional security cameras put into place, we can really start to hold some folks accountable for their actions over there. These are really just unnecessary. Um, this is a great resource that we do have, even on the back end of that, you, you can, you can, as it goes through its stages of, of compost. You can go to the back and get great healthy compost to use in your gardens and so many. Great things over there that, that. That are useful, and, and it's unfortunate that, um. Some folks continue to abuse the. Privilege that we have there. So please. Use the compost pile, use the brush pile. Put brush in it. Push leaves in it. Uh, don't put your pellet stove in it. Uh, the cemetery is picking up that time of year. Uh, the cemetery crew has some. Uh, requests for the community. If you do have grave, uh, decorations, rocks, pebbles, different things around. Uh, there are some of those things posed as a real danger as the mowers and, and weed whackers go through there. Um, and some of them get sent flying, uh. And, you know, there are rules and guidelines around what is acceptable over there for decorations. And those that are not acceptable, um, given those guidelines, will be removed after June first. If you would like to. Uh, retain your ownership of those things, please go over there and grab them. Um, keep them at your house as a nice keepsake. Um, but they will be removed after June first, or a complete list of rules, um, and, and. Things that are acceptable to have around those headstones. Uh, they can go right to our town's website. Um, under the Public Works section, there'll, there'll be a thing there, and. If you're having trouble finding that, please feel free to call me at the town office, I can navigate. Uh, I mean, the town treasurer's department, um, as of April twenty-fourth. We. Sent out a hundred and fifty-three thirty-day demand notices on unpaid sewer. Uh, so. Quite a few members of our community are seeing those notices come through. Um, like that's a pretty high number for this time of year. Hope that. With the additional outreach that we do, we can encourage folks to. Come and get squared away. Also, the FY twenty-two audit reports have been received and distributed to, uh, the council and the school. Uh, the new pumps for the wastewater station at Sterns High School. Um, have been. Ordered and are in the building stages over in Kansas City. Those should be here in ten to twelve weeks, and an outfit out of Bangor will be installing them. Uh, when the time comes, hopefully by midsummer. This is. Very much needed upgrade of. Uh, some pumps that were installed in nineteen seventy-eight. Um, so. Very much looking forward to having a fully operational system over there. It's a rather large facility, and it's good to be able to shift that stuff. Uh, over to the main pump station to. Get it where it needs to go. Um. Just a reminder, the, the, the funding for those pumps was included in FY twenty. Capital budget for wastewater. The. Uh, Community Initiatives Director has been, uh, working alongside Counselor Danforth in her Thrive Benop Scott. Hat, as well as Brittany Gruder. Um, they were able to. Uh. Be awarded the fifty thousand dollar grant towards, uh, that fitness court that we've been discussing. So there's, there's plenty more fundraising to go, but that's a, that's a great start. Um, and they are, um. In the process of a pre-application for a site inspection. That, that would be, you know, another next step and. In a good direction towards the goal. Uh, Amber and I. Attended, um, the. Communities Leading on Climate. Um, Resilience. Conference in Orano recently that was held by the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and Future. I was asked to speak at that, I graciously accepted. Uh, we spoke about all the great work we're doing here in Millinocket, led by the Community Initiatives Director. Um, they surround, you know, EV chargers and, and prospects of solar and. Um, it was very well received by. Other attendees throughout the state. Uh, you know, Millinocket was represented there in a big way and very highly respected, so. Glad to pass that on all this evening. Uh, she's also been training on, uh, general assistance, uh, to help us back up with that, as well as payroll, which has come in handy. Uh, several times recently, so we're, we're. Focused on cross-training to make sure that we have coverage depending on who's out at what time. That's been a great, great thing we have going on, and she's also paired up with, uh, Ms. Diana Lakeman over here. We call them the Party Planning Committee. Uh, they are planning a grand opening party for the dog park and all the pups that go. Uh, visit that. So there'll, there'll be a. Some messaging out about that very soon, and we'll be having a little shindig over there with some. Even some little doggy bags for the doggies. That'll be. Great time, I can't wait. Um, and I wasn't planning to announce this yet, but the official announcement came out this afternoon, uh, so. Our Community Initiatives Director, along with, um. Nick Sabatina, a representative from Ransom Consulting, who has worked closely with our town and, and our catatonic over the past several years. Tag teamed a. An application to the EDA Brownfields funding, uh, in which case. We, the town of Millinocket, were awarded five hundred thousand dollars, um, to assist. In. Brownfields, stage one assessments, um, and, and further if need be, for economic development opportunities coming in, purchasing. Um, any properties, whether they be former car dealerships or businesses downtown that need to be. Assessed and studied to, to learn about what needs to be abated from the property. Having those funds available and held locally to be administered locally. Speeds that process up exponentially. Um, so this is, this is a very big deal. Uh, it's not a widely-used pot of money. It's a very specific pot of money, but it'll go a long way as we. Work to revitalize our downtown and speed up the process of, um, investors coming to. Um, look at these properties. If they don't have that access locally, um, you know, they are forced to look. Elsewhere on a wider scope, and it's a much lengthier process. So, um, very proud of her and Nick and their work on that. Uh, that's a pretty big deal, so I'm really happy to. Um, in the fire and ambulance EMS, public health and safety. Area, um, they did receive, uh, the Maine Municipal Association Safety Grant to purchase a mega lifter. Um, that will help the crew get patients up off the floor into standing position onto a cot. Um, that's a. Pretty big deal as well. Um, there's a lot of. You know, possibility for injury and strain, uh, while lifting. Uh, folks. From the floor like that, so this, this will certainly help them get that along. And they were able to obtain all of the new turnout gear. Uh, y'all remember the Stephen King grant that, um, Community Initiatives Director was able to. Um, secure for our. Fire station, uh, so they were able to replace all the turnout gear for our firefighters, um, and that has all been received at this point, so. Happy to. Fill you in on that. We. Uh, getting into the East Millinocket Police Department, they share some information with us, um, from time to time. They are looking at the year-to-date in two thousand twenty-three, there's three thousand three hundred and fifty calls that have come in. Uh, that, and, and so far, that's a nine hundred call increase over. Um, a year over year, so. Things are picking up for activity in their. Their world. Um, and they have listed here that they have arrested and or summoned. Hundred and ninety individuals just in two thousand twenty-three. They shared that Officer Clayton has successfully completed her drug recognition expert training. Uh, and is now certified to perform those exams. Having somebody. Uh, with that type of certification in the department will make quite an impact on. Um, their drug-related OUI requests. It's not just alcohol anymore, folks. Um, and then Officer Sally's has graduated the Maine Criminal Justice Academy, um, just recently, and they are very excited to have her back to work on the crew. The Millinocket Memorial Library Report is attached. Um. I've taken up a considerable amount of time this evening. I thank you all for sitting through that. There's a lot of great work happening, um, and I don't often get an opportunity to go through all departments like that, so. Appreciate it and take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mister Manager. Any other council comment on the manager's report? Council Higgins?
Thank you, Mister Manager, and all the departments for all the updated information. I get a question on the East Millinocket. Calls at thirty, thirty-three fifty. Is that just Millinocket's count calls, or is that combined?
It's not specified in this report. And that will have to be my answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Higgins. Any other council comment? Council Bragg?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, going on the list, Outer Reach Broadband, one hundred percent okay with. Um, if you do need people to attend that meeting, I don't know when you plan on it, but I'd love to participate either by phone or Zoom. Um, digital sign. This. Was brought to me about four years ago by a business. Uh, owner in town, and I was happy to take it on and, and bring it in, and. I'm very, very happy to see it come hopefully to a close. Um, it, it definitely is needed. You know, you drive through other towns, um, and you see their signs, and I know what's happening more in other towns than I do what's happening in our own town. Before I was on the council, that is. Um, you know, you drive into Lincoln. Before, yeah, I felt like it was probably needed to say that, but yes, you know, you're driving to Lincoln, you know what's happening, what events are happening, so it's good to see that we're getting something very similar. Um. We haven't had an update in a while on the situation down, um. With, uh, the plumbing issue. Down on Iron Bridge Road. Has that been resolved? Is it any better?
I actually have been informed recently that that has not been an issue for. Uh, say a couple of months.
Perfect.
Seems to have improved over there.
And how about the recycling issue at the transfer station? I know that it was slowly increasing. Have we reached a point where we can actually start making money on this, or?
We are not there yet. We are at a point where. Very soon it will be. Mandatory to. Enforce traffic at. Transfer station. Um, individually. To. Remove their cycle products from their loads. Put them in cycling facility. Um, you know, I've witnessed on my own being there and, and had several conversations each week as I go on Saturday. With tire truckfuls of cardboard. Going into the hopper still. Um. Some people are very nice when I approach them, and I remind them that the facility is open, and I would like. You know, very much if they would help us make money rather than spend money, uh, and do the right thing, put it in the, 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 the recycling facility. I have. Also experienced. I have also experienced being completely berated by community members when asking them to please recycle the materials. And um sworn at and, and boxes thrown at and um. I still encourage everyone to take part in that program, because every, every bit of weight that goes into that hopper. Costs the town well over a hundred thousand dollars a ton to remove it from our facility. When if we put it in to the recycling facility, we can make revenue, we can make money as a town. Um, well over a hundred thousand dollars a ton in some cases um to, to recycle it and do the right thing with it. I still very much encourage that, but no, it hasn't really improved lately.
Okay. Uh, last, uh, against some people's understanding, some young people do still read the newspaper, and I am one of them. Um, and I thought it was funny to read an article about the dog park um and how there's not enough dog parks. Uh, in last week's paper, I thought that was pretty funny, and there was a whole thing in there about it being in Little Italy, but regardless. I think it's a very good thing. I think it's a great start, and I don't think we need to stop at one necessarily. Um. I think depending on, you know, how popular this turns out to be, there may be a chance in the future for talking about it either expanding or. Doing another one in a different section of town, but I do support it, and I think it's a great, great idea, and every time I drive by, I always see people down there. So I, I love that it's being used, and I'm hoping to have that grand opening scheduled soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragg and Council Higgins. Have a follow-up question?
Just one follow-up question, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted, we haven't had an update on the property closing in quite some time. Do you have a status on that?
You referring to the Elks property closing? We are. Waiting for an update from that organization at this point in time. I understand that they had some procedures that needed to be followed. And updated before we could schedule that closing or reschedule that closing. And we're just waiting on, on that confirmation now.
Council Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, uh, for the uh outreach broadband, uh, want to. Go ahead and thank outreach uh for stepping up and being a, their community involvement and support, trying to go ahead and get uh internet service. Along with Acxiom and a few, and others that have put uh hotspots in around the town. To try to make internet access available to everybody, uh tourists as well as locals. Uh, the digital sign, this will be a, a great addition to the downtown and much, much um badly needed. Uh, I, I very impressed by the one at the high school now that they have and how they're using it, and I think. This is communication of, of the twenty-first century, and I, I believe that it's going to be, like I say, it's going to be a big asset to the town. To have this as well as in the future having a digital two-sided sign that we can go ahead and uh. Use for multiple purposes and get information out to the public. Uh, the transfer station, it, it's, it's a roller coaster out there in the fact that. We spent so many years educating the public about recycling, and there was, there was a great deal of recycling that was being done. Uh, cardboard, tin, plastic. It, it was great. People were doing it voluntarily. It was, it was a habit people to do. Then we all of a sudden said, no, we can't take it anymore. We, it's, we can't get the money for it. We have got, we got no place to sell it. We have no market for it. And so it stopped, and people just automatically started giving it old habits, throwing it into the hopper. And I think it's going to take time for the public to re-educate themselves into recycling, back into. Cardboard and plastic and tin and that out to the transfer site. Uh, patience in this case, I think is, is a virtue uh that the town should have. And let, you know, just keep reminding people and have the signage out there for recycling. I, I just think that it's something that, you know, it's, it's a, going to be a relearned process. And it's going to take some time, but again, uh, I think eventually that people will get into the same uh. Routine that they did before and dump the stuff in the hopper that needs to win, and then go down and take their recycling down. And uh use it like it always was in the past. Uh, I think, like I say, patience is something that we need to do right now. Uh, I appreciate the town Public Works Department and their painting of the crosswalks and things. That's always a, a great thing and a, and a. Great service that they provide for the town of Millinocket. Always looks good when the holidays get here, Fourth of July and that, and they do a great job with it, and I appreciate when they do it. As well as the street sweeping has come around very well. Um. As far as the uh. The airport is concerned, uh, Mr. Manager or Jeff, uh, what are we clearing? Uh, removing stovage and clearing brush again this year out to the airport and either any of our, the quadrants out there?
Would you like me to answer, Mr. Manager?
Sure, go for it.
Okay, yes, uh, yes, every year we have a ten thousand dollar uh item in our budget for doing brush removal. So yes, that will be happening after the budget's uh in effect July first.
Yeah, thank you. Um. The last thing I had on here that I saw was the library. I want to congratulate them. I see that they are starting to get their EV chargers installed or in the process of it. Uh. Uh, Rick Wassigan is going to be doing the work out there for them, and uh they're going to be, they're going to get their EV chargers installed relatively soon. So congratulations to the library on that, and with that, I'll say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Mador. Council Pelletier.
Yes, I'd like to thank the uh town manager for the thorough report and Tom DeHed for all the great work. Uh, I would. Encourage town public. Read and report. There are paper copies here and it's widely disseminated uh social media. Wherever you see the agenda, you'll see this document in there to read, edit on websites, basically. Whatever, so uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. All right, a public comment on the manager's report. Seeing none via Zoom. Also seeing none. Move forward to the orders. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Order number one forty-two dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number one forty-two dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the town warrant for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the town warrant for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council Mador, Council Danforth, are there any heavy hitters?
Yeah, we have some heavy hitters to mention, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, and that was for Arcadia Design Works, and they're working on. Um, excuse me, construction and document um documents for their, our airport grant, our airport um EDA grant. Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-nine cents, Industrial Protection Services, and that's for fire department turnout gear, some of the, the King Grant. Um, that they received. A hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, Millinocket Insurance Agency, and that's for general liability. Um, for the town property, public works, airport, our, our vehicles, et cetera. Um, ten thousand, twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cents, municipal review committee. Um, those are some of the disposal fees that we just heard about that. That we need to pay. Uh, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-five cents, Underwood Electric. Um, and that is part of Veterans Park Upgrade, and that was the CDBG grant um final payment. Eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents uh percent power.
Thank you. Any other council comment on the order? Seeing none down to the public. Get zoomed, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one forty-three dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Yes, order number one forty-three dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council Bragg.
A couple of. Yeah, just a couple of heavy hitters. Um, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, and that's to Millinocket Insurance Company, and that's for um property and buildings. Content that's insurance as well. Um, and a thousand dollars and seven, a thousand um dollars seventy, a thousand seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents percent power.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Any other council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Order number one forty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number one forty-four, twenty twenty-three, providing for ratification of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three special municipal election results. It is ordered that the results of the May twenty, sorry, May twenty-three, twenty twenty-three municipal. Special municipal elections are hereby ratified as follows. Total ballots cast, three hundred and ninety-nine. Town council unexpi, uh, term, November twenty twenty-four, vote for one. Agati Junior, Richard W., sixty-nine votes. Miss Jimmy, eighty-three. McLaughlin, sorry, McLaughlin, Tammy, two thirty-four, Stratton, Gilda, eleven, blanks, two. ROVC, three ninety-nine, clerk's notes, certify the town clerk, warden's return of votes cast attached.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council Mador. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Council Pelletier, would you please read order number one forty-five dash twenty twenty-three?
Order number dash, one forty-five dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for ratification of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three school budget referendum results. It is ordered that the results of May twenty-third, twenty twenty. School budget, is that it? Okay, it is ordered that the result of. May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, school budget referendum are hereby ratified as follows. Question one. Yes, votes, two hundred and seventy-five, no votes, hundred and ninety, blanks, three. Question number two, yes, votes, two hundred and eighty-six, no, ninety-nine, blanks, twelve, ROVC, three hundred and ninety-seven. Clerk's note certified by town clerk, ward, warden, turn of votes cast, attached.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council Bragg, and council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Madam Clerk, would you please do the swaying into the new counselor?
All right. Yeah, you can't stay down there now.
Council McGowan, would you please read? All right, order number one forty-six dash twenty twenty-three, Council Mador, would you please read?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Order number one forty-six dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of the increase. In the FY twenty-three package insurance budget, whereas the package insurance budget for the town and wastewater apartments. Is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, and the insurance premium is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. Resulting in a budget overrun of fourteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents. It is ordered that the town, Millinocket Town Council approves the budget overrun of fourteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Which will be funded from the undesigned fund balance. Note, the package insurance budget covers the following insurances. General, public officials, employment, practices, auto, property, and crime.
Motion made by Council Higgins, sec, uh, motion made by Council Mador, second by Council Higgins. I need council discussion on the order. Council Pelletier.
Thank you. Just wondering the uh effects on the budget. Is this coverage the end of the fiscal year twenty-three? Or both years, and if so, is it uh reflected in the financial year twenty-four budget?
Mr. Manager.
Uh, we'll likely have to make that adjustment um moving into the next year as well.
Is the coverage for both years?
To my knowledge, no. Uh, we'll.
That's my expectation, run on a rule basis, therefore.
Right. The, 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 we are aware that the rates came in much higher than anticipated. We had in our, in our budget work for FY twenty-four, anticipated a regular five percent increase in the insurance rates. And what came to us shortly after the budget was adopted, uh, was more like a ten percent increase. Um, so we will have to consider that in the future as well.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any other council comment on the order? Seeing none down to the public?
There you go.
Buddy Levitt, senior. Uh, here we are again. I went to the all-budget meeting, all April and everything. And from the first week, all we have is included is increase, increase, and increase. Here we are again, back again. Something's not right here, you know, we appraise each other saying, hey, look what we saved. But now we got an increase of hill, and I'm just wondering, is this going to keep continuing? From week to week or month to month before we even hit the two thousand twenty-three budget, which is only a month away. And I see there's, there's no discussion or anything to, to the council, so everything must be all right, the increase. I figure there might be a little discussion here, but it's not. That's my opinion, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Any other public comment? Does that mean pressing hold?
One oh four Sunset Drive, and it shut off again.
You press it again.
I'm, I'm confused because I agree with Mr. Levitt. We're almost at the end of this fiscal year. So what does this increase? So what does this increase? My homeowner's insurance goes from July second of one year to July second of the next year. What's the town insurance go?
I'd have to double check the dates on, on the beginning and end. But these are, these are rates set by the insurance agency. This is not anything that we have control of within our office. Uh, and if the rates go up, we have to adapt to it.
For the next year. But once the insurance agency says to me, your insurance is eight hundred and fifty dollars for this year, they can't up it on me until the following year. Can they do? I mean, am I interpreting this wrong that this is an increase that?
Council Pelletier?
Uh, to address that, uh, assets that need to be insured start being covered at different times during the year. And this could very well be, uh, that could be part of that. And as far as the rate increase, when it occurs, part of it has to be charged in the fiscal year that we have, but it does has no matching to all the assets that are covered at different times. So yes, we get the bills like you say, but different assets, different departments, different timeframes for the insurance every year. Doesn't match our fiscal year.
And so we really never know then.
Well, that's, that's exactly right. And the manager made the best estimate he could at five percent. Ends up being ten percent when he got the bill for the assets that we've already covered for the year of twenty-three. Or going into twenty-four, part of that, uh, from when he received the bill for the end of the fiscal year, fourteen thousand, as he said, we'll have to address the financial year budget twenty-four with this increase as well. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Being none via Zoom? Back to the council. Any further discussion? Also seeing none. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, Council Bragg, would you please read?
Order number one forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, providing for the Ed McDonald Safety Grant Acceptance. It is ordered that the Milonoke Town Council accepts the one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollar Ed McDonald Safety Grant from the Main Municipal Association Workers Compensation Fund, which will be used to purchase a lifting cushion.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragg, and seconded by Council Mador. Any discussion on this order? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval to increase Memorial Day flag for ye- fiscal year twenty-three budget. Whereas Memorial Day flag fiscal year twenty-three budget account E zero eight one six dash thirty-one-two of fourteen hundred is seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents under budget to cover the actual flags expenditure of two thousand and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. Therefore, it is ordered that the Milonoke Town Council approve transferring seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents from the undesignated fund balance to cover this expenditure.
Motion made by Council Pelletier. Seconded by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on this order? Council Mador?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this, this is a um, a microcosm of what basically Mr. Levitt was talking about and, and others in that unfortunately, due to inflation and everything else, you can go by previous year's figures as far as what the flags cost last year. Uh, and come to find out that they, because of inflationary things, the flags are costing more money. I mean, they are what we use and what we put out every year, uh, and they cost more money. And if the bill comes in after the budget has been approved, you really kind of have to go ahead and dip into the, uh, dip into the fund balance, which is one of the reasons there to cover any overages. And whether it be the insurance or the flags or other items within the budget that come in, you know, Council Pelletier is right. Sometimes the manager has to use and the treasurer have to use best guess to come up with numbers for the budget to put it together to come up with a final budget total. Those guesses may be sometimes, uh, bought on. And ninety-nine pence out of a hundred, they may be. That one percent is what you see when you see these. And that is the fact that these are coming up short, but, uh, this is why we have a, a, uh, undesignated fund balance to help alleviate these situations so that we don't have a strain or draw on taxpayer moving forward on them. These are coming out of the undesignated fund balance, not out of any, any taxes that are uh, occurred or approved by, you know, a, take care of the over. So, I mean, I, it's, it's a necessary evil. And I'm sure that'll be quoted in the paper as well, but, uh, it is what it is. And I, I look for the, uh, maybe a couple more of these things, maybe crossing the council's path. We're over and done with this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Mador. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order. Number one forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval to order ambulance prior to fiscal year twenty-four budget. It is ordered that the Milonoke Town Council approves accepting the attached ambulance quote of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars for delivery in fiscal year twenty-four.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Bragg. A council discussion on the order? Council Danforth?
I'll speak to the order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know on the proposal on the second page, you need to order it now to be able to even get it. Um, maybe it will be here by December or January of next year, so, um, to go ahead and do this. And it looks like it's under, um, it's a little bit less than we actually, uh, put in our capital budget, so thank you.
Yes, uh, Tom Malcolm, by a chief. Yes, uh, and the reason that we, we'd like to get a name on this, it's actually being built right now. They took the order from me earlier in the year, uh, to build the exact same ambulance that we bought last year, two years ago, the four-wheel-drive truck body uh, with an automatic lift in it. The truck is actually on the assembly line, we have a chassis reserved. Uh, why I want to do this is so that I can reserve that and make it Melonockets. Because if not, we would be probably another year getting a chassis. There, there are no chassis available, or I know twenty-three chassis available, and they're saying there's going to be a delay in twenty-fours. That's why I wanted to put it in early. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. Any other council comment? Council Pelletier?
Uh, just a question on the budgeting, this, uh, issue. Is it, this is a capital expenditure that we have on a plan?
That's correct.
Yeah.
For FY twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah. So do we need to, in accepting it now? Will we be paying it in twenty-four, or will we be paying some of it now?
We'll be paying it in twenty-four. We'll be invoiced.
Okay, so there may be no effect on the reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Down to the public, any public comment on this order? Via Zoom? Being done back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one fifty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Order number one fifty, twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for Boreal Theater. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Randy Jackson, business address, two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, doing businesses for real theater, two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Milonoke.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Mador. A council discussion on the order? Down to the public? Also saying none back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Bragg, would you please read?
Order number one fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of municipal ATV grant application for Northern Timber Cruisers. Whereas the Northern Timber Cruisers are seeking a municipal ATV grant from the Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Bureau of Parks and Lands to fund the bridge work necessary for completion of trails connection to East Melonocket. It is ordered that the Milonoke Town Council approves of the submission of the attached application and authorizes the town managers to sign any necessary documents.
Second.
Motion made by Council Bragg, and seconded by Council Mador. A council discussion on the order? Council Pelletier, you're.
Thank you. Um, just a point on these orders. If there's a change in, uh, cost to the community or, or into the budget, I, I would like to see it kind of spelled out on the order page rather than uh, figuring it out. This is a, a routine uh, grant that we managed for a long time, and historically, we've been at like seventeen thousand dollars on the community share, town share. And looking this over, it increases it to seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars total. Uh, share for the town is ten percent of the hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So it's, uh, a very good deal, and, uh, sworn note that maybe be helpful to have that kind of information on the order page.
Not entirely sure that's accurate. But, uh, Mr. Raymond is here from the Northern Timber Cruisers. We, we, the town, don't have a financial obligation in in this.
The ten, the ten percent is covered by the Timber Cruisers.
Right.
So you do reimburse us for that? Cause I know in the past years, it's passed through, right?
Yes, all, all this is, is a pass-through grant. And the state does it that way so that there's checks and balances to it. We've done this grant since, uh, two thousand and ten. And, uh, we've done over, oh, probably quarter, three-quarters of a million dollars on these grants so far. Uh, to complete the Comet Trail West, it was half a million dollars. And that was all done through grant process. And this is just, uh, something we do every year. The good part about this is the state just changed the, the the combination. It used to be an eighty-twenty, and now it's a ninety-ten, so uh, we're gonna get quite a bit of work done for the amount of money we're getting. And the good, uh, another part about this, uh, council, uh, Pelletier is, uh, the ten percent, we already have it covered. We've received a grant, uh, from Yamaha for twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's already, already covering that part of it. This is, uh, the last piece of this c- connection they're trying to make East Melonocket. The, the trail is completely built, except this little section of, of bridge work right now.
Well, thank you for that, uh, explanation. Where, where I got my information was on the agreement where it states, uh, where this grant is technically the town's grant. And the club.
You're correct.
As he says, reimbursed us. Uh, um, it, it reads, upon submission not more than once monthly, receive service, uh, invoices and trail costs from municipal county. They request the state to pay ninety percent, so that they pay ten percent for us. This information was, you know, not spelled out on the order either. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you.
Any other people from the public? Via Zoom, seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one fifty-two dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
It would be my pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Order number one fifty-two dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding for pickleball courts. Whereas pickleball has grown in popularity within the Milonoke Community and School Department, encouraging and engaging community members of all ages to come together for fun and exercise. And whereas the conversion of two tennis courts to four pickleball courts has been coded at, quoted at twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. It is ordered that the Milonoke Town Council authorizes the town treasurer to allocate and spend up to thirty thousand of local ARPA funding to this project.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Mador. I do have one question before. Uh, assuming that this passes, Mr. Manager, what would be left in the ARPA funding?
Current remaining balance is one hundred and nine thousand. One hundred.
That's where we're at right now.
Eighty-nine.
Thank you.
Sounds about right.
Council comment on the order?
Eighty-nine, not a hundred.
Eighty-nine? Council Higgins? Council Higgins, who's your?
He's trying to get it. It's almost gonna die again, so, um, just looking at the ARPA funds and according to the eligible uses of the funds, wouldn't it be better for it to go into like the investment in the water and sewer, or just like we did in that last order, one forty-nine, twenty twenty-three? Um, to offset some of that for the ambulance? I just think that's an awful lot of money for, uh, to, to revamp the tennis courts. And how much use is it actually gonna get?
We answer that.
Absolutely.
Uh, we're not allowed to use American Rescue Plan Act funding for budgeted in items, uh, whatsoever. Would have been. Yeah. Now, well, so those have been budgeted. We can't use ARPA funds to, um, pay for something that's already been budgeted. It's as easy as that.
Thank you, Council Pelletier.
Uh, I too have a little heartburn, yeah, Bryce Hagg renovation. Um, for a number, I guess. I'm curious, this work might have some
This was brought to me by quite a few members of the public.
Okay, that's fine. Then I guess my questions are, uh, what are physical pension changes to the betting require that much money spent for a new net? And if you're putting a new net, how does that affect the tennis court that was prior to that? That you have to change the nets back and forth every time you want to, if it's still available.
Mr. Manager, could I ask a question? Who is the, was there a council that brought this order, or was this your order?
Council Danforth.
Council Danforth, could you provide any additional information? Or perhaps somebody from the rec. commission? I'll let her speak first.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the whole pickle, pickleball, um, explosion and use of the pickleball courts started with the age-friendly committee, um, started with Randy Jackson, um, actually had the initial idea and brought it forward in Thrive Penobscot. We bought some, um, of those some of the portable nets, and they were at the Kat- Katang Gear Library, and folks could go borrow them and then take them down to the tennis courts, set them up and use them, uh, as temporary courts. Um, and then in the wintertime, when it was no longer able to play outside, the same cohort group of people, it grew and they played in, in the, um, gym. So as a result, several sent us emails and spoke to me and spoke to others, saying it'd be great if we can convert the tennis courts into pickleball courts. So we, I then asked, um, through the manager, asked the recreation director what that would cost, what would that would look like. And so she sought out the, this estimate and brought it forward.
Go on, answered my question.
What is your?
Why, uh do we lose that tennis court?
So my understanding and just reading the information that was brought forward, it's gonna totally convert them, the surface and put, and put permanent um nets in, so we'll have four pickleball courts. On half of what we have down there, so two, two tennis courts will become four pickleball courts. The other side will still have two tennis courts remaining.
Well, that's good, no, I was thinking for some prime tennis court.
Yeah, and so we have people here that are playing and I'd also asked um Nick Cullen from the school to come in so that we had them buy in, so we could, we could ask. Lots of folks in the community what the impact would be because we know this is a lot of money. Um and it would, it would change it over, so um we have some other supporters here, so at the time, public comment, it'd be great if they spoke.
I guess it'll help yoga, we exercise, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Council Pelletier, could I refer to Tom, you, you're part of the rec commission, correct?
Tom Malcolm, chairman of the rec commission, seventy-three School Street. Rec commission knows nothing about this. We have a rec commission uh that is set up by the town. I called this afternoon to find out what was happening with this. I called the, the rec director and she said she'd been. Going to get a price to, to take them out. If we take those out, then we have two tennis courts left. So if something should ever happen and we want to pour tennis courts again. We'll have to build them. Because this will not be a temporary thing, once this is done, it's gonna be done. I just, I'm, I, as a chairman of the rec commission, I don't understand why we never got. Evolved in this whatsoever.
I, I get a question for you, Tom, are you normally? My first situation dealing with something like this, is the rec commission generally consulted or at least informed in these kind of decisions?
The rec commission meets on all, anything that goes on the direct department, correct?
Any else have any questions or comments for rec commission?
So those tennis courts belong to, are under the control of the rec?
No, they're under the control of the town of Melanocke.
Okay.
Every, everything is under the control of town of Melanocke, all ball fields, all the.
But as far as the, as far as the cleaning. Maintaining. Who had, who, who does all the maintaining is, would it be Public Works or would it be the rec department that takes care of the maintenance?
A little bit of both.
Thank you.
Like you just.
Yeah, um. This is, I, I remember when Counselor Jackson brought this up originally. To create pickleball courts. And it was my understanding at the time that the, the. The pickleball courts themselves, if the tennis courts were used. There would be uh portable nets and paddles that would be used on this. With the idea that. If the town of Melanocke had ever had a tennis team back. And that which we, of course, we know that's not gonna happen. Uh we now go ahead and if we'd have anybody interested, they play for East Millinocket and the cons, in the consolidated. Uh. High school. Team, uh so. The only sad thing about this is that this wasn't thought of or worked on or brought forward earlier. Before the courts were refinished. Because we just, just in the last few years. Refinish those tennis courts completely, so that there were new surfaces, new lines drawn. Uh new poles for the nets and everything else, so. We're going to go and we're gonna be spending more to, you know, I'm not against the project. I'm just saying that it's unfortunate that it's coming up at a time when. The work had already been done on those tennis courts and they'd already been resurfaced and already been repainted. To have them as tennis courts, but I think. In the long run. I think the pickleball probably, I don't play it. And I don't totally get it sometimes. But I uh, I think that. It was, it's gonna be, it's a growing sport, I think it can be played by anybody of any age. And I don't see the harm in going ahead and having a facility available to use if it's going to get used. And it's something that carries over into the high school gym in the wintertime, so it's a year-round, obviously, it's a year-round sport, so. I, I, I will support it, thank you.
Council Braggton.
Uh, did this quote RFP? Is my question, or did, was just one company asked?
The quote was provided by one company, before the work is done, we would be required to put the project out to bid.
With everything that's been said, I think that the rec commission obviously should have some say in it, I think that it should go to committee like. Counselor Pelletier said to see, to gauge public interest a little bit more. Um. I motion that we table this to the next town council meeting.
For a sec. For a second. The ARPA. Project that I'm sensitive.
Use is not, however. I mean, the, the, the spending of that is not time-sensitive, we. Have to allocate the rest of those funds by the end of the year, however. I would like to. Remind the council that when these funds were first considered. For expenditures. Council directed me, the manager, to. Put out messaging. Asking for requests from the community, from local organizations, or. Direction on how to spend these funds. This is the first time. Multiple members of our community have joined together and reached out to me directly to request. Use of our ARPA funds locally. Aside from many other requests that have been made that were. Entirely justifiable within the guidelines of this. This funding program. You, you, many have been turned down. Uh. Benny. Requests in, in good effort and, and good qualification, this is the first one that has been community-driven. By a large number of people and I would encourage our council to listen to them. Thank you.
Well, as we stand right now, we have a motion to table, does that motion have a second? Motion does not have a second. So we will go ahead and have, is there any other council discussion? Other than myself, so I will put my two cents in, um. I am in favor of having the pickleball courts. Although I am not in favor of how this process was done, I think it's been sloppy. And I think the rec commission needs to be. Involved, I think that. Um. I think this could have been handled a little bit better, although I am in favor of having the pickleball courts. So with that being said, I'll go down to the public. And if there's anybody that would like to speak on the public. Name, address.
Nick Cullen, one ten Morgan Lane, I'm also the assistant principal and athletic director of St. Junior Senior High School. Um I wanted to come here today to one hundred percent support this. Um like um Mrs. Danforth said, we've had a, a core group of pickleballers that have been reached out to me. Using our gym, um driven by Gretchen Berry and. I think that it makes too much sense. We don't have a tennis team anymore, we very seldom we have anybody play tennis. Um on our courts, my wife and I are some people who play tennis in the area and whenever we go, I've never seen anybody there playing besides us. I think that the pickleball courts, I've seen more pickleball action in the past. Three months than I've seen my entire life, I spend probably more time at the school, the school facilities than anybody else in town and they're always out there. Um I don't know how they do it sometimes with the weather, but they are always there. For the price tag. I know it's not cheap, but let's be honest, what is? You know, I, I spend twenty thousand dollars a year fertilizing our fields at the school. It's just everything is ridiculous in price and. You know, with grant money, the community uses it. I have this conversation with people all the time. We always talk about bringing people to our community, um Counselor Doomay and I have had this conversation before. What brings new people into your town, your school system, your recreational department, it's another thing that we can add for our, for our community, it's another thing that we can have available, available for our, for our kids. And I just personally think it's a no-brainer, I, I wholeheartedly support it one hundred percent, thank you.
Thank you, and. Mr. Cullen, if I, if I could ask you a question, kind of clear up. Council Madora's. Archaic knowledge. Uh. It is kind of a cross between table tennis and tennis, right, it's kind of ping pong and tennis, but.
I don't play myself, my wife does, I, I, she tried to explain the rules with me, but by what I get out of it, it's, I would say a cross between. Ping pong and tennis, am I close? That's, that's how I, I would do it and I do know our gym classes partake in it, um so it is something our kids learn. And we have a huge group of people that, that partake in it, I know every Sunday in the high school gym, I go in to. Do something and there's always a slew of people in there, so um I think that you would be pleasantly surprised of how many people would take advantage of them.
Thank you. Any person from the public that would like to speak on this order? You can form a line if you'd like.
Gretchen Berry, three twenty-four Mass Avenue, and I want to thank Nick for his support, um, I'm one of the players. In this month alone, I personally have played thirty-five hours of pickleball. Um, I have a daughter, I have a su- uh grandson. We play, it's multi-generational, it's fun, it's introduced me to people that I've. Met on the street, seen on the street, but I don't interact with them, I think it really brings a lot of people together. I think everybody on the, on the council could come down and play tonight and you'd have a good time, in fact, if the wind were down, we'd be down there now. But um. We have a, a pickleball group on Facebook that has about forty members right now. We have some that don't belong on, they're, aren't on Facebook and I just think it's something that the community really needs. It just brings all of us together and it's a good, clean fun and. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gretchen, any other public comment?
Scott Le- uh Scott A. Levitt Senior, three thirty Congress Street. Is it gone?
The green light.
Green light. Okay. I believe uh. That it is across the town. And uh, I don't know. I've been listening and. From all the council meetings I've gone to and everything. And I've talked to the manager, I've talked to all these. The future is Melanocke. But now I hear, oh. We might never have a tennis team, we don't know. And as far as the tennis courts go. I've been down there with my grandson. Playing ball and I have seen them all used. And that was last month, there was four courts there. People and two people waiting. So it might be a periodic thing. But those courts were, like Mike said, was done. Redone and put the money in, now we're looking to put. Put it somewhere else. You've got enough fields around here, you've got the airport, you got there, you've got so many places that you can put things like this. But to take away and look in and saying, hey. This will never be, this will never. Melanocke will never gain a tennis court again or a tennis team, which is wrong because we're looking for a future. And I, some of them young kids coming up. You don't know. And we, we, we're just slamming the door on them and saying, oh. And like you said, if something happens to the other two tennis courts, what do the other people have? It's just like the baseball softball fields, all, all recreation, the basketball fields, the gyms. They're used not all the time. So I'm just saying, this is a lot of money to put in and like I said. Another thing is all of a sudden. And I'm not using this as an excuse, but it's the same thing. When I was complaining about the issue of the age. Complex. Nobody knew and I'm saying here right now. That the council looks surprised. The recreation department looks surprised. You know, so why not put a survey out for the town and see if this is what they want before we put a big bu- bucks into it? I know we're looking at the future of our kids, but this. To me is a surprise that it came out and nobody's knowing about it, so. I just uh, I just suppose it and I think it's a lot of money and I think you guys got to reconsider. To table it and look for a survey or something from a lot of people. You know. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Any other public comment?
John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, Melanocke. What a novel idea. You've taken something that doesn't get used a lot. And you're adding four pickleball courts, like. Like you said, I don't play it, it looks like a fun game, uh. And you've got people in the community interested in it. And are, are, are these ARPA funds we're using for this?
Correct.
So there's really no cost to town, Melanocke, we're using something to create something here, so when people do come here. And what I've seen on TV. I believe sixty minutes did a skit on it. And it's very popular, so we gotta keep looking to the future, we wanna. Do the right things, we gotta keep moving towards the future and I think this is great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond, any other public comment?
Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset, I know nothing about pickleball. But the conversation seems to be between um taking away two tennis courts. And putting four pickleball courts. Would it be worth the investigation to see how much um more the cost would be to? Put separate pickleball courts? I don't, I don't, you, you're talking about resurfacing the tennis court, is that, does that bring the, the? Hmm? But you're gonna have to resurface the tennis.
Repaint them.
Gonna have to direct it up here.
Um, I thought that's what the order said, to resurface the tennis courts. And.
Any other public comment?
You're on.
It's on right now, okay, Sue Robertson, I live at three sixteen Massachusetts Avenue here in Melanocke. And I'm one of the pickleball players from pretty much the beginning. And we do appreciate the court use with the. At the granite school and the outdoor courts, but I think there's some confusion here on. What needs to be done to convert those into pickleball courts, because if you visited the site down there and saw that there's actually four courts. Already lined in. And the tennis courts are still up. So I don't. And the, and the pavement doesn't really need to change, we're, it's fine the way it is, although I do notice that there's already some. Cracking in the pavement that was put in a year ago or two years ago. Um. And I do question the quote for twenty-eight thousand because I'm not sure if that person that gave the quote came and made a site visit. To see what was actually gonna be needed. From my standpoint and maybe to my fellow pickleballers. They need to have. Holes dug in the ground and a place for four nets and that would be eight holes in the ground and the nets themselves. I don't see how that adds up to twenty-eight thousand, I could be wrong. Um, so I do think there's a question there and I don't believe that you even have to get rid of the tennis courts. Because we play with the tennis nets up now, we put our. Our temporary nets on each side of it and there's plenty of room to play. So if there's reservations on getting rid of tennis courts, I don't think that that's. That has to happen. So that's my input, I, I do question. Um. I wanted to take care of some reservations about the courts that are there, if you took a, a ride down and take a look, you'd, you would see that there's really not much that needs to be done, except put the holes in and the permanent nets. And you'd still have future use of your tennis courts. And two full courts to use on a regular basis on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Any other public comment?
Angela Berry, forty-eight Lincoln Street with my son James Emerson, also forty-eight Lincoln Street. Um, you can see my mother spoke before myself, um, James has played multiple games of pickleball. Um from day one, um along with myself, who actually. Um, along with myself, who actually talked my mother into playing the first time. Um, and now she's hooked. Um, and she is the go behind everybody on the Facebook post of let's go play. Um, with that being said, um, I will reiterate that pickleball is a huge growing activity for all ages, all shapes, all sizes. Um, everywhere you travel, um, there are pickleball groups in communities. Um, there are tournaments, there are night pickleball, there are day pickleball, there's all sorts of pickleball. Um, and with that being said, I think that it is huge to be able to have so many different age groups being able to be active in our community. Uh, one of the biggest things I think that we are striving for lately is getting activity in our community. We have the bike trails, we have the walking paths. Um, this is just another activity that all families ages can do. Um, also with what Sue said, I don't really think that there is a lot that needs to be done other than permanent court um, with the posts put in. And we have used the pickleball portable nets so much that they don't stay together anymore. Um, and that's just been since, was it last September? About last September. Um, we have to put wood in them for them to stay together on one of them because we've used it so much, taking it down, up, um, in and out, in and out of the school. Um, so I really appreciate you guys listening. Um, as Sue said too, go down, check it out, come down and play. Um, it's a blast. And any single person can play, any age. Um, and if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask us. You want to speak?
So pickleball has been growing a lot lately and.
State your name and your address, please, sir.
So my name is James Emerson. I live on forty-eight Lincoln Street.
Awesome.
And I've been playing pickleball a lot lately. And I've really enjoyed it. I feel like it gets people out, gives them exercise and could really benefit the town with getting people interested in different activities. So I feel that the permanent nets would be a good idea because of what my mother has said. The nets are showing where that we are taking them down and eventually they're going to fall apart and not going to be able to work with all the people we have playing. That wouldn't be good. We wouldn't be able to play anymore. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, young man.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Are there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna go back to the council, but I have a question for the manager first because somehow now, although I'm still in favor of pickleball, I have more questions than answers. Um, has any other site that you know have been looked at for a pickleball court? A permanent pickleball court?
No. Uh, I would anticipate that being a much larger expense.
Is it? Okay, and, and to the lady that spoke before, um, did this company, Sue, yes, did they actually come up and and look at the courts up in here in Millinocket, or is this just the best guess?
This is the results of uh, both that was forwarded to me by our rec director.
So you don't have an answer?
I don't know if they were here physically.
Thank you, Jane. Do you know? You don't know?
When, can I just make a mention? There was, there was several mentions of the rec commission and their involvement in this. Um, can't speak to the rec commission's involvement in this. However, I can nod to the way that contract is worded with the Small Knocket Rec Department. Our rec commission is really for informational purposes only. They, they really don't have any authority over the program or the direction of the program, and it's clearly spelled out in the contract. I would just remind of, of their involvement in, in the overall uh, big picture.
All right, back to the council. Council Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm looking over the proposal. Uh, and yeah, there is uh, the cleaning of the surface, pressure washing, uh, installing the concrete posts, as you said. But they're also saying that the playing surface needs to be redone. Uh, one coat of acrylic refer- uh, resurfacer, uh, co- uh, coat of fortified Lex, uh, latexite, dark green, a coat of uh, tournament blue, uh, nuts over and above painting the lo- make sure the lines are permanent. So this quote here does have uh, the, the town has received, does have, now, what this quote doesn't have, and what I'd like to see is a breakdown of what these things all cost individually. Uh, how much of the cement posts? How much of the, this resurfacing supplies and things that are done? And is this something that needs done completely? Or just does the court itself need to be just repainted with the lines and be playable the way it is? Uh, I, I like the chairman, uh, starting to get more questions than answers. I, I still think it's, this is a good project, and I think it's something to go forward. I just, as a counselor, uh, I, I just had, I'm starting to get more questions because I don't really think that this has gone. This is not, it, to do this, this is not the type of quote I'm used to seeing. I'm used to seeing a quote that has figures for each individual item as it goes through, and I don't have them here, and I wish I did. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manager.
Could I make a recommendation? I would, well, first like to make, make a point. The the order as written, if considered this evening, requests up to thirty thousand dollars. If that were to be approved and the bid released for other companies to bid on the project. If there are differences of opinion between the original quote and whatever other quotes we get, maybe one comes in with, with something more in line with, with um, with what they've mentioned tonight. Maybe it's, comes in at ten thousand dollars. Um, but we, the administration would have the ability to review those quotes uh, make the best educated um, decision. The other option I would, I would point out is that um, you could certainly direct the slash us to um, explore other options or consult other agencies or to uh, more research on this quote. I know that this is a company that the rec department has worked with in the past and is known very well throughout the state. So I, I would, I would anticipate that they know what they're talking about. But um, that doesn't mean that there are not other opportunities, or maybe, you know, there's, there's more than one way to skin a cat, right? So I, I would, I would see those as the two options. And, you know, we could either have the ability to pay up to that dollar amount um, and review several bids that we may receive, or um, we could do more research and um, come back with uh, more details or possibly other options.
Council Higgins.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just gonna say, I um, I appreciate what everybody came in here talking tonight. I really appreciate, because I'll tell you what, it's a prime example on how it could change somebody's mind and somebody's decision. Um, I was against it. I won't deny, um, but listening to the public. I want for it. And again, I also don't agree. Some of the stuff we're hearing that some stuff is not needed. It could just be, so I think some more investigation should be done. And as Council Madore had said, and get an itemized as well as several estimates.
Council Bragdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm in favor of pickleball. Again, I've never played it either. Um, I, like you said, I have more questions than I have answers at this point. So I think the manager proposing doing more research is something that definitely needs to be done. But regardless, I do would like to dip my foot in the water and, and play pickleball. So I guess I'm challenging James to a game of pickleball.
Council Pelletier.
Yes, uh, but one, uh, Sir Levitt's point, the manager did point out that any budgeted item not be part of the funding. It was made clear that it does not affect tax commitment. So I, I would think that would lay a lot of you know, questions that somewhere else now. Uh, other than that, uh, when Mike got into uh, of the surfacing, I thought, well, now I can see the cost by why it is burdened. We all know what it would take move up your garage with kind of the materials they're talking about. Uh, certainly, Council Higgins, I mean, on, on the uh, having, mind you, a lot of public support for this. I was when I stopped talking a little while, and still am. I think this order be passed as is because it's general enough so that giving us this word will more research and tighten up the process probably other vote and maybe variation of how but I'd like to see it passed and, and go forward with it. Certainly the chairman's point that uh, are, anything a thousand of dollars would be a and uh, yeah, not having the right collaboration. Well, missing there. But failing all of that, I mean, just move ahead with it. It gives him a way to get it.
Council McGowan.
Yeah, I get a word in. I it's hard around here. Um, no, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things like Council Pelletier just said, just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Levitt's comments, this is, this is specific funding grant money. So it's no, it has to be used for specific purposes, and it's not money coming out of the regular budget. So that's completely different. I think sometimes people confuse town money and what their taxes are paying and what is grant money that has to be used for very specific purposes. And where this was something that was initiated by people in the town, and I know it's a growing sport. I work in the school, I see it. Um, and we're not taking away the tennis courts. We're just asking to have half be the pickleball courts and half be the tennis courts. So that's a compromise. So we're still, people will still be able to play tennis and people will be able to play pickleball. So I, I agree with um, with what you said, that we pass the order because it's generic order and, and let the manager get some more quotes and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Council McGowan. Council Danforth?
Thank you. Um, and I really appreciate, I guess, the process that has happened here. Um,
Uh, I'm about to nut, I am about to nut, bro. I'm gonna bust all over the.
Whoa. Well, there. You were saying.
I appreciated the process. I appreciated um, the conversation that's happened here this evening around this topic. Um, and you can say it came full circle. And while all our processes perhaps weren't perfect, I think going forward, we can work on um, how that happens. And I appreciate the manager's suggestion of how to move forward, that the order is general enough. And we trust him to go ahead and get some other um, some other input um, around what the surface could look like um, his project. So I will vote on the order as is. And thank you for everybody that came today to talk. That's, yeah.
You're welcome.
All righty, any other council discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I call for the vote.
Council Dorr calls for the vote. All those in favor? Seven zero. Mr. Manager, you have your direction from the council to do your due diligence and investigating all the things that need to be investigated, please. Thank you. Order number one fifty-three dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one fifty-three dash twenty twenty, providing for approval of Northern Penobscot National Region three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four foreign tariff. Whereas in region, request approval for the Millinocket Town Council regarding warrant, are in for that required for their twenty twenty-four budget-related salary benefit reserve account and capital reserve account. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council be attached warrant, are no, are not required additional funding on behalf of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madore, council discussion on the order. Seeing none, down to the public. Be a zoom. Back to the council, all those in favor? Seven zero. Order number one fifty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number one fifty-four twenty twenty-three, provide for approval of an application for entertainment license for Boatman's Bar and Grill. It is ordered that the attached application for the entertainment license is hereby approved for Owen Ross, Three Rivers Holding LLC, business address eleven Hasbro Drive, Millinocket, who in businesses Boatman's Bar and Grill, eleven Hasbro Drive, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Bragdon, council discussion on the order.
Chairman.
Mr. Madore.
Yeah, every uh, every year, we get an application for uh, Boatman's. And every year, when you look down through the application, uh, are the taxes current and for personal property or or uh, real estate, it is not. And we're always, seems like we're always trying to chase for the taxes on this property. We always approve the, we always approve because obviously the, the argument is if he can't, if he doesn't have the, can't have the entertainment license, he can't work, can't work, he can't pay the taxes. So it, it's, I, I wish we could break the cycle of this, every time this application comes forward, we don't have the taxes current on this. It, it's one of the, it's one of the few that comes across every year with this situation. And I don't know what the answer is, but I wish there was something town could do to kind of not see this happen more, more often with this one establishment. To that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Council Madore. I do have a suggestion. Council Pelletier.
Yes, uh, I, I have the same. Order and other than maybe offending it, a conditional order on property taxes. I don't know what else.
Any other council comment? If you don't renew the license, they'll find the money.
Yeah.
And then they'll resubmit. Public comment? Seeing none? Back to the council, all those in favor?
I can, I can speak on this just for a moment if, if you would like.
Matt Clark.
Owen Ross in collaboration with his partner, um, are new owners um, as of prior year, I believe. Um, also I have spoken with him and he is in the understanding that they are uh, past due and he intends to take care of them as soon as possible. Um, he does note that he is going through a little bit of um, hardship with the application process with the state, um, with some finding of his uh, finalization of the victualers. So as of right now, they're not even opening. Um, if you do pass this, he does intend to um, come in and pay the taxes. He didn't say when. Um, he asked if he could join tonight, and I told him he would be able, be able to be a zoom or in person. I didn't see him. I was hoping he would be here to speak on his own behalf, but I just wanted to note that I did speak with him. Um, again, you're approving entertainment to go ahead and so he can submit his liquor license following. Um, we are still pending his victualers. That hasn't been submitted yet. I just wanted to note that.
Any other public comment? And we are back to the council. New owner? All those in favor? Seven zero. Hopefully he doesn't follow the same trend as the prior owner. Uh, order number one fifty-five dash twenty twenty-three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number one fifty-five dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for approval of an application for malt, vinous and spiritual liquor license for Boltman's Bar and Grill. Is ordered the attached application for malt, vinous and spiritual liquor license hereby approved for Owen Ross and Warren Fisher. Business address eleven Hasbro Drive, doing business as Boltman's Bar and Grill, eleven Hasbro Drive, Melanocket.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order. Seeing none down to the public. Via Zoom. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Seven zero. Reports and communications, warrant committee for June eighth, twenty twenty-three council meeting would be Counselor Higgins and Counselor Madore.
All set.
Um, Madam Clerk, I'm sure that you'll add Counselor McGowan to the warrant committees. Okay, um, Chair Committee reports. Are there any chair committees?
The Charter Review Committee, which is yet to downer any public viewing. The whole air, uh, meeting June seventh, Wednesday, four thirty to six thirty. And we'll be holding off on, uh, uh, item guarded permits until such time, get some input public. Thank you.
Any other committee chair reports? Tom, anything from the events committee? Any movie nights coming up or anything?
There it, Tom Malcolm, Co-Chair Recreation, uh, Events Committee. There will be a movie night, Saturday night, Wild Lyle Crocodile, uh, will be the movie. That'll be starting at six o'clock. Uh, and then we have a meeting scheduled a week from Monday will be our next meeting. We're trying to wrap up the Fourth of July activities. Get those on the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. We will move to the two-minute public comment. I have one via Zoom. Would you please state your name and your address, please, ma'am?
Uh, yes, it's if, are you calling on me, Jesse? Um, Counselor Dumea, uh, it's Barbara Riddle Divorceak. I'm at Sixth Main Avenue, Melanocket. And I'd like to, um, thank everybody on the, in the town, including the town council and the town office for their help with the upcoming farmer's market, which is scheduled to open, uh, June third, a week from Saturday. Will be open every Saturday all summer through September sixteenth. And are, some of our vendors include Chiron Farms, um, and an Amish farmer, Moosehead Farmer and Ranch in Smyrna. We have other vendors who are doing handmade, uh, quilted items, uh, honey, barbecue sauce, tea and soap and some, uh, crafted wooden items. We have artwork coming and we have musician. Jeff Hamm is going to be playing. We're very excited about it and, um, if you have any questions, um, I'm open to that. I would like to mention that we were hoping to be able to let main authors, um, promote their work and sell their books. And there seems to be a bit of a glitch with the current peddler's license wording and, um, Counselor Madore is working on that, I believe. And I don't know how soon we can get that potentially tweaked, but I would love to be able to provide an outlet for local main authors and I'm open to any questions you might have. And, and, yeah, big thanks to, uh, Counselor Danforth and the Age Friendly Committee for all their support of this project. We've gotten mentions in the Bangor Daily News and the Lincoln News and it's been on the radio. So please come out nine to twelve a week from Saturday at Veterans Memorial Park. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's a hard one to follow. John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, Melanocket, Maine. I just wanna tell you, like I've told you all before, some of your new members and stuff, but the Norman Timber Cruisers really appreciate the sport that you've given us today and all over the years that we've been doing this. Without your support, uh, the support from the county, uh, it's been overwhelming the last few years to help us do what we're doing. And we hope to improve. And with this new trail connection, it's gonna be huge for the area. And probably not as big as the pickleball is gonna be. But, uh, and just a note on that. You've already got a good quote there. It's gonna be hard to get other people to get quotes this time of year. You're gonna lose some time on that and they probably wanna get up there, stop playing. And it's good to get a nine miles bill. I understand that, Council Madore, but, uh, uh, it's almost June first and it was a short season around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Any other public comment on the two-minute? Counsel Bragden.
Uh, this is the fourth time that I've, can remember asking, but I would still like to see an update or a meeting regarding Brookfield and the decisions that were made. Um, I asked the last meeting for an update, didn't get anything. So I'm asking again for either a special meeting or them be invited to come to our next town council meeting.
Thank you, Council Bragden. You have a public comment.
Tom Malcolm, seventy-three School Street. Just a reminder that Saturday, uh, the Summit Riders will be coming through, uh, the manager mentioned in his, his, uh, manager's report. But this is the tenth year and Melanocket's always been very supportive. I had a phone call this afternoon with the gentleman that's, that's, uh, heading this up. And they're always thrilled to come through Melanocket because they always get such a good outpouring. And I just urge you, community, um, and all of us to get out and support this. You know, these, this is, this, these are rides for our heroes. These, these are our true heroes. So I just wanna urge everybody out there watching to make sure you come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for mentioning that. They are rides for heroes. They're rides for Gold Star family members too, that will be picking their, their, uh, rocks up, uh, up at, um, their stones up at, at, um, Matt Polstein's place up there. At Neoc. And, um, Council Bragden and I are actually gonna be riding the last leg of that. So briefly, what they do is they start from Portland area and they shoot up through Bangor and police escort. And by the time they hit this exit in Medway, they got almost over three hundred bikes. Now, I've been part of sixty, seventy bike convoys and they're impressive. Wait till you see this. And Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first time the row is going to direct them down through the Penobscot area, correct?
That is the plan, but, uh, that's all run by the state police honor guard. And whatever they decide to do, they'll do. They, they, but the plan is that they will turn and come up Penobscot Avenue to Katad and then, and then shoot out through. And, uh, they don't waste any time, so.
So we encourage, absolutely encourage everybody to come out from Melanocket and, and, um, show support for the fallen heroes, for their families, and also for the hundreds of, of bikers that are are gonna be traveling to do this. So, um, right, there's two hundred registered stones and it's a Saturday and it should be, they should be ETA of them pulling through is three thirty-ish?
Yes. So we're meeting at the rest stop in Medway at three, for departing Medway at three thirty, we should be rolling through Melanocket between three forty-five.
So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made by Council Bragden, seconded by Council Madore. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Happy Memorial Day. Happy Memorial Day weekend.